Regular meeting of the Board of Education, February 21st, 2019. To order, we have a motion to approve the appointment of District Clerk and Record Access Officer. Beeler, motion?
Second.
Anthony. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, so passed. I'll now administer the oath of office to the District Clerk, Donovan Tucci.
You want to get any of the audience?
No, she should be here.
Come over here.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of District Clerk of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District.
Of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District.
Of the Office of District Clerk.
Of the Office of District Clerk.
Can't hit you with it. Of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District.
Of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Which would be better than my ability of reading this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Boy, that was a squeaker. Motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the discipline of a particular person.
Motion.
And update on Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association negotiations. We have a motion from Suzanne.
Second.
Second from Mr. Beeler, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned to executive session and will reconvene hopefully by 6:00 in to regular We are reconvening into regular session, the regular meeting of the Board of Education, February 21st, 2019. Please rise with a pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The district is committed to academic achievement and success for the students, all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible, global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Questions and comments from interested citizens? I know you.
Yes, I'm back.
You're back.
So, my comment today is about the capital projects that was approved back in October. So, on your school, on our school website, it's proposed, the timeline is for field construction to begin in April of this year and to end in August of 2019 this year. As spring sports are nearing, they're going to start first week of March after the first weekend there. I was just wondering how these sports would be impacted. I know I'm a member of the track and field team, and I know a track's part of this project. I was at the Crusader Chat when it was proposed. It seems like a wonderful project. However, in the short term, I'm not really sure how this program will be impacted. So, I'm a senior this year. This is my last chance to really run at a home meet or, you know, defend Monroe's honor, you know, at our home turf. But, this fall, due to the Route 32 construction, we had no home cross-country meets. And that, I know a lot of people on the team were pretty bummed about that, a lot of seniors especially. We were like, hey, what's going on? And that's no fault of the district, the state could have done that whether you wanted them to or not. And I don't really hold you guys at fault for that, but it was still a bummer. This spring, construction for the new fields is on the horizon, and it seems like our, the running program, track and field, will be impacted again. This is even more of a bummer because that means in my senior year, I will have had no home meets if it is slated to schedule as it is on there. So, apart from the whole sentimental aspect of being a senior and missing all these home meets, both the Crusader Classic, our fall home cross-country invitational, and Crusader Relays this spring, which is our home invitational for track and field, those are important fundraisers for our track and field program. This money's needed to buy equipment like hurdles, high jump pole vault, all the things needed for those events, uniforms, and even to enter athletes into events at other schools. Money is needed to do those things. So, I would like to know if, if we're not going to have Crusader Relays this spring, and I know Crusader Classic in the fall, you can't turn back the clock, that already didn't happen. So, it seems to me that our track and field program and our cross-country program, which pools its funds, is going to be a little short in the short term on this, financially speaking. Our track and field program recently has had a solid string of successes. Recently, just this winter season, we were Division, OCIAA, and Section 9 champions. And in the fall, we were, for cross-country, we were our division champion. And last spring, we actually won divisions, counties, and sections for track and field. So, this is a program that has had, earned a lot of prestige at our school, and it seems that it's been disproportionately impacted by this project. So, I don't know the full extent of how it will be impacted. I don't know for a fact that we won't have our meets. I just know that Crusader Relays has historically, the last three years I've been part of the program, happened in the first week of May. And if this construction's slated to start before then, I don't see how you could have a meet in a construction zone. That's just me there, but, I'm not going to deny the benefits that this facility will have long-term. I think a new track is desperately needed. There are literal holes in our current one, and I think our program will benefit immensely from this. However, I'd like to know if there are any plans to compensate the program for this loss of funds that it will experience due to these, to the lack of these fundraisers.
Okay. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
So, there is, there is, we were supposed to have a presentation today, but Ms. Hock is not here because we want to talk about specific things that are going to happen as a result of all of these changes. So, at our next meeting, there'll be a presentation, and we'll be able to give you definite answers.
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Presentation was better this time than the last. It's impressive.
What are you going to do when you graduate? You're going to have to still come back and go to the podium, keep up, keep practicing. A couple of things, we will have a brief recess after the report by Boards of, Board of Education Committees. And there are computers over there and computers in your home to vote for North Maine and get North Maine. It's Playground, Playground?
Can I say something?
And every, you can vote once a day for each email. I vote five times a day, Mr. Cotto.
Okay. That's too many emails. Can I say something to Ethan, though? Congratulations, Ethan. Right? So, I had mentioned back in October that we had three students who were members of the, who were selected for the National Merit Scholarship. They have now moved forward to the next level, so there's 15,000 students who are all vying for this. So, we're very excited, and congratulations to both Ethan, Emma, and Victor. So, just a round of applause. Thank you.
Are there any updates on questions or comments from interested citizens previous?
Yes, I think Ethan had, had raised a question. Ethan, you're like popular. Ethan had raised a question about, what was it?
Scheduling of clubs after school.
Yeah, after-school clubs, and Dr. Hasler has a response.
Sure. At the last meeting, it was shared that there were some issues related to the scheduling of after-school clubs at the secondary level, specifically the issue dealt with clubs having meetings that were being held concurrently, which kind of forced students to choose between meetings. The issue is that the, the majority of our extracurricular activities, and clubs specifically, are run by our staff, our teachers. The, the teachers have meetings on Monday afternoons, so that kind of limits Mondays as being a day where we could potentially have meetings. Clubs are typically not held on Friday afternoons because we don't have a 4:00 activity bus as ridership was, is low on, on that day, which basically leaves Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons for the, for these clubs to meet. The high school has a lot of different extracurricular opportunities for kids, and having only three days to spread those out, and the high school starts early, so before school is not an option. So, it kind of causes a little bit of a jam in terms of kids who are looking to have multiple, multiple clubs that they are looking to participate in. That being said, we, we started a conversation this past Tuesday, we met as an administration to look at a bunch of different options, including, you know, can we, is there any way that we can use Friday to potentially open it up and, and kind of spread out and have a, a fourth day for clubs to meet? And then also started to dig into attendance, where is there a way for us to be able to stagger the, you know, looking at how the attendance of kids that may be on multiple clubs, how those clubs could potentially be staggered to open up opportunities for, for kids to be able to do that? And, and that's something that we're definitely going to look into, to be able to, you know, no one wants to have students not being able to participate in the after-school clubs if they want to. So, we're, the meeting included transportation to look at that Friday, that Friday busing situation, so we're, we're looking at all of it.
Good, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the textbook listed?
I thought you were going to read the title.
I can't read that title.
La lengua que heredamos.
Yeah. Like she said.
It's, it's the language we inherit. It's a beautiful, I love the way that it sounds, la lengua que heredamos. Ethan?
Motion. Yes, motion?
Second.
Stacy seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I got in the sixth percentile when I, in my SAT achievement test in a language, meaning 94 out of 100 people did better than I did. So, you expect me to answer, to pronounce that?
Okay.
Reports by Board of Education, Chris is not here. Dawn, do you have any?
Yes, I think, actually, I'll let Patrick do some of the, he's, his and its team has made some amazing progress on the facility side, so I don't want to steal his.
Well, it's, it's kind of a short report. So, our capital project for fields, the HVAC improvements, were approved by SED this week, yesterday.
Really?
So, that's good.
That is amazingly.
That is, that is good for you.
And that happened quickly, so it's going to keep us, hopefully, on track and maintaining the timeline.
Don't use the word "track."
That's right, okay. On the timeline, is that okay?
Good.
On the original timeline? Let's see, so we're going to next week, advertise for bids, we're going to have the bids out on the street, hopefully Thursday next week. We'll, we'll give the vendors about a month. We'll ask for those back in late March, March 21st or so, evaluate those, and then award, and, you know, the project will move forward. Principally, the work will be done during the summer. That's what we're shooting for, we're trying to minimize the impact on athletics. There may be, you know, there may be some minimal impact, but we were trying to, you know, make that as small as possible. Let's see, what else? That's really it. You know, later on in the agenda, we're going to approve renewal of the lease of the Herrmann Center with the village.
Right.
That's it.
Dawn Talbert, Stacy McClary, and I went to the NISBA Capital Conference. We heard speeches and Q and A from Terry Platt, the Assistant Counsel on Education to the Governor, who attempted to justify the Governor's paltry budget. Gee, I seem to have written in some subjective words in there. There also was the need for diversity in teachers as well as students. We have a diversity of students, now we need diversity of teachers, and mentioned the building aid formula will hurt, safety funding. Mary Ellen Elliott spoke, she's the New York State Commissioner of Education, says that the SED is understaffed, by the way, everybody knows that. The tax law change hurt New York State, we have a deficit. We need to focus not only on proficiency, but on the growth of the students year to year. So, that was good, sort of a value-added approach, which I applaud. Then a roundtable of reporters spoke, USA Today, Politico, Wall Street Journal, Spectrum News, probable, probably the budget increase for education will come in again, about 4% plus or minus as in the past. $2 billion shortfall, as I said, in the revenue, which is, they, the Governor's Office said was a big surprise. I wonder why it would be a surprise, but it was. And the tax cap will probably be permanent, and what will be the carve-outs or the reduction in unfunded mandates as a concession is something that's going to be under discussion. Scoofus, and a matter of fact, everyone we spoke to was, talked about that. The dinner speaker was Al Hassan Susso, a New York State, the New York State 2019 Teacher of the Year, originally hails from Gambia in West Africa. His parents sent him to our country for a better life, he's a Poughkeepsie resident. He commutes each day to teach in the Bronx in one of the poorest districts in the country. He talks about reaching the hearts of students in order to reach their minds, and as far as I'm concerned, he's a prime candidate for a professional development day, except, of course, he teaches, but maybe you could persuade him to take a day off. He's superb. He is absolutely superb. At breakfast, we heard a senior from Bolton Central School that has approximately two students, I don't know, very small upstate school.
14 graduating seniors.
14 graduating seniors, who volunteers throughout the YMCA, and she talked about her efforts to require a certain amount of public service as a requirement to graduate high school in the state of New York. She's going to be pushing for that. Wonderful. Then we heard a very articulate Senator Shelley Mayer, who's the Chair of the Senate Education Committee. We had sessions with newly elected Assemblyman Colin Schmidt, Senator James Scoofus, and Assemblyman Colin Bravinek. Schmidt wants to start a student of achievement program, and we'll hear more about that. The Governor's Budget, the Assembly Budget, will be presented in the middle, the Senate Budget will come in. This is sort of how it happens every year. The legislature seems more favorable to educational funding and may, may push back a bit harder on the Governor than in the past, even though the legislature is now wholly Democratic, and so is the Governor, but regardless of party, there doesn't seem to be any love lost in views about the Governor from both the Republicans and the Democrats regarding education funding, as far as I could tell. He's not terribly beloved, doesn't matter what your political stripe is. Anything to add on that?
No, I think.
That thing, we had a good.
We had a good talks with Assemblyman Bravinek, and Schmidt, and Senator Scoofus, and we look forward to them really advocating for our schoolchildren and what we talked about.
I will say that I reached out to Colin Schmidt's office after we returned because that committee that he is setting up on education, I threw my name into the hat to be a potential person to be on it. I'm not sure what, how it would impact us, but it can't hurt to be part of it.
I do, too.
Yeah, so I know for Dawn and I both, we kind of said that if he's looking for members from our area, that we would represent.
You never know how much you affect things, the three of us going up. Sometimes Dawn and I would, would go up to this yearly New York State School Boards Association Legislative Conference to try and lobby for public education, whether it be certain policies, or money, or whatever it is. You never know what it, you just know that if you don't show up, and other people don't show up, it's like voting. If you don't vote, you can't complain. If you don't go up there and speak to your legislators, and I encourage everybody out there in television land, and everyone here, to, to not only get on the computer for North Maine, but get on the computer and get on the phone to your legislators, because the more they hear from you, the, we vote. We vote, so they need to be responsive to us. Any other reports?
Can we take a, a two-minute break?
We are breaking, we are taking a break. We will take a five-minute break and return after that. If there are students here that need their government class papers signed, now's the time to do it.
There we go. We are back in session after about three or four minutes.
No board business was conducted during the brief recess. We now have a 2019-20 budget review, the overview of the building budgets. I presume that Dr. Hasler.
Correct.
Will present and preside.
Would you present? Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, and thanks to the Board of Education for the opportunity to present the 2019-2020 school budget proposals by our seven school buildings. I'd like to begin by also thanking all of our building administrators, as well as department chairs and coordinators, for their assistance in compiling these budgets. As always, at the beginning of these presentations, we sort of start with a disclaimer that this is the status of the budget as of February 21st, 2019. We're sort of mid-budget planning process, we have a series of other budget presentations, and there's Books Two and Three on March 6th, Personnel on March 27th, and Mrs. Rodriguez's final budget presentation on April 10th. Each of these budget presentations sort of represents the evolution of the budget. The Book Two and Book Three presentation on March 6th includes these portions of the budget, just like some of the pieces that you're going to hear tonight were part of the budget presentation that was given at our last Board of Education meeting. Just a few highlights regarding some notable things across the budgets of all seven buildings. As always, we, we maintain a, an alignment to our textbook aid on an annual basis. So, one thing that you'll notice is that on the secondary level, there's a little bit of a reduction in terms of textbook requests, and there's an increase in textbook requests at the elementary level. All of that remains in alignment with what our annual allotment is for state aid for textbooks. However, because we're down in textbook requests at the secondary level, we also have a need at the elementary level because of the rollout of the Reader's Workshop program. There are also a few additional things that, that have happened across the seven buildings. We started budgeting at the building level for paper supplies, so you'll notice some shift in the building principles when they speak. We'll talk a little bit about some of the shifts in their budgets regarding paper supplies. At the elementary level, we are streamlining the supply lists across the elementary buildings. In order to do that, there are some things that have been typically found on supply lists that are being taken off and being purchased at the building level. For example, oftentimes on an elementary supply list, you'll see things like tissues and paper towels and wipes and things like that. In order to streamline the supply lists, we are taking those, we're making those options, those items optional on the supply list, and we are now going to be providing them as a school district. So, there's going to be a little bit of an increase at the elementary level in terms of supply lines. Something also new that you're going to see this year, in past presentations, the Board of Education has asked for the building administrators to speak a little bit about their staffing. So, each of the buildings has a few slides at the beginning of their presentation that outlines their staff for the current school year, as well as their projected staff for next year. However, one piece that's not included in that is the actual salaries of the staffs, because in order to be able to make comparisons between buildings, you have the difference of the, the amount of seniority of a staff within a specific building. So, it makes it very difficult to compare salaries to salaries across the buildings. However, when we have staffing conversations, we compare what we call full-time equivalents, FTEs. So, you are going to see the building speak about, for example, Sapphire has 14 classroom, general education classroom sections in their building. They're projected to have 14 general ed classroom sections next year. So, Mrs. Brock has 14 K-1 gen ed classroom teachers in her building, she's projected to have 14 K-1 gen ed classroom teachers in her building for next year. So, the buildings are going to speak about the, the breakdown of all the various sections that they have, as well as the, the staff within each of their departments.
Eric?
Yes.
Can they specify if there is a change?
Yes.
Why there is a change?
Yes. You'll see, it's broken down by departments, and in the presentation, they'll talk about the current staffing, as well as the projected staffing for next year.
I think that was all the things that I said that I was going to talk about.
I do believe it is.
Okay. So, we're going to start with Sapphire.
There we go. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for allowing us to present our budgets this year. So, if, go to the next one. Going right into our school profile, our current enrollment is 288 students. I was excited that one of our former high school students came back today, and she enrolled her daughter in kindergarten, and she was a former student of mine. So, I'm excited that many of our former and graduates are coming back and enrolling their own children into our district, and I get to see both mom again, as well as their daughters, so it's wonderful to see. My staffing, we have 61 professional staff members, both full and part-time. 10 of those are shared within the district. So, for instance, my art teacher, I share with myself, as also with Pine Tree with Mr. Jades. Same with art. Our district-wide related service providers, such as OT, PT, are also shared district-wide as well. Some of the trends that we've noticed, and we've noticed this when I say "we," I refer to Mr. Berger and I, we've noticed that there's been an increase in ENL population as students are enrolling into our district. We've also realized an increase in need for school readiness. There are families that are entering into our district, and also those that have been in our district for numerous years. Their children are not, for many different reasons, participating in pre-K programs. So, the school readiness, we're noticing that there are students that need extra time. With that being said, one of the programs that we're investigating at this point is a transitional kindergarten program for next year. Overview of our staff, if you, I'm not going to go through everything, but as you can see, everything is, there's no change to it. And again, continuing on, no change. Before we get into the budget, I just want to go through some of the programs, Mr., or excuse me, Dr. Hasler alluded to, our Reader's Workshop. That is something that some of our teachers have been going through for trainings this year. We're rolling it out in total next year. So, that is one of our assumptions as we look at the budget for the next slide. As I mentioned, the increase of ENL population, as well as school readiness. Requests on the next slide will be literacy texts. Dr. Hasler mentioned about texts from the secondary level versus the elementary level. With the Reader's Workshop, there's two components to it. There is a, what's known as a instructional library, in which the teacher uses as a resource, and then there's something known as a browsing library for students. And this is a wonderful opportunity for students to browse through and pick out their books that they want to read each week. So, we do need to have browsing libraries established in each of our classrooms. Century walls and furniture. We were very fortunate, Mr. Berger and myself, we were very fortunate this year to work with Dr. Morales. We each received some sensory walkways that we are looking, we just received, and we're looking at having those installed in our hallways, and we're going to continue with that trend. Many of our students need those breaks, they need the sensory breaks throughout the day. It's a long day for them. So, with that, we're looking at different touch walls that they can participate and use, as well as furniture. Something simple as a mobility stool, a rocker. Lap, the lap trays, where the students don't need to sit at a desk or at a table, they can sit on the floor, and they are comfortable with a lap tray. Also, part of the requests will be, as Dr. Hasler alluded to, the classroom supplies and paper. So, looking at, and I apologize for how small it is, if you look at the paper supply line, you'll see that there is an increase, but if you go down just four lines beneath that, there were actually two lines in our budget in previous years for paper supplies. We have condensed the two, and we're putting everything under the SE principal paper supply at this point. The general supplies, that increase is for the consumable supplies for each of the classrooms. The general supplies, that increase is for the consumable supplies for each of the classrooms, whether it be the tissues, the paper towels, the wipes that we use after snack time, because our children eat in the classrooms. We do need to wipe up the tables afterwards and make sure that they're safe for other students as well. Our texts, that increase is due to Reader's Workshop and obtaining high-interest texts for students to read, to take home with them, to add into their browsing libraries. And again, the furniture and equipment, that is the mobility and the kinesthetic and century furniture that we're looking at having into our classrooms, so that students are not necessarily just sitting at a table and a desk. They can be mobile throughout the classroom. They can sit on the floors. They can share a table, a floor tray with a friend and function and work. Any questions?
Great, thank you.
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the recommended budget for SmithClove for the 2019-20-20 school year. Currently, this year, we have 522 students in our school. We have 107 total staff members who work with those students. That is a number not just made up of teachers, but that is the total staff in the building. So, that includes custodians, the lunch monitors, the one-to-one monitors, food service providers, our main office clerical staff, our nurses, our security. That's everybody that works in the building that we employ. So, we have 107 total staff members. We have 12 kindergarten gen ed classes, 12 first-grade gen ed classes. We also have seven special education classes. Starting with the least restrictive, we have a co-teach class offered at the kindergarten level, a co-teach class offered at the first-grade level. We have a 15-1 in kindergarten, a 15-1 also at the first-grade level. We have a 12-1-2 at the kindergarten level, the 12-1-2 at the first-grade level, and we also have an 8-1-2 K-1 class. That's predominantly an ABA class for students with communicative disorders and such. One of the trends that we are noticing is, again, Mrs. Brock also mentioned this, the increasing ENL population, and I think that we're seeing this across the district. Currently, this year in SmithClove, we have 58 ENL students. Those are students who are classified to receive English as New Language curriculum and who need assistance with language proficiency. Many of those students that we noticed this year are newcomers. They are students that are just coming to our country for the first time. They're coming from other countries who, not only do they not speak any English, but many of them have never even set foot in a school setting, even in their home country. So, we're challenged with, you know, how do we meet these students' needs? So, one of the things that we are going to encourage and offer for the 19-20 school year is we're going to try to do a, and again, this is to offer, a bilingual program at the kindergarten level. And we would place newcomer students in there. We would place any ENL students in there that are from Spanish-speaking. And the reason that we target the Spanish-speaking population is because predominantly, that is who our ENL population is comprised of. We do need parental support. We need parental consent for their children to be entered into this program. It's a district-wide offered program. So, that means any ENL students who speak Spanish would be offered this program. So, if they had a student who attended in the Sapphire boundaries, they would attend SmithClove for this particular program. And we're structuring it so that it's almost similar to a special education program, where we have a full-time bilingual teacher, a full-time teaching assistant in the classroom as well, all day long, to provide and push in ENL support. That would provide not only the ENL support for language acquisition, but also it would allow for more small-group instruction with the use of the teaching assistant in the room all day long. It wouldn't cost the district any additional funds or to budget for, because we have the luxury right now of actually, one of our kindergarten teachers is a certified bilingual teacher. So, we would be able to essentially take one of our 12 kindergarten classes and make that a bilingual program. And again, we already, and again, we're fortunate enough to have a Spanish-speaking, full-time teaching assistant in the building as well. So, we have the staff in place. We just really need the parental consent to be able to run the program. That's why I said we're going to offer it, but we can't do it without at least having 20 students district-wide say that they are in favor of this type of program.
Previously, it's been offered, but we haven't had enough people in there to agree. But the numbers are there that we may be able to actually have the full opportunity to be able to have that classroom.
Correct. And again, Spanish is really the only population that we would be able to offer this at the K-1 level, because we have the numbers to be able to offer it. Just kind of for your information, we have 103 families whose primary language is other than English in our building. And of those 103 families, 88 of them speak Spanish. So, predominantly, we're dealing with the Spanish-speaking community. Our staffing overview is pretty flat-lined. What we have currently this year for the 18-19 school year, we are recommending the same staffing for next year. One number that I'd like to just kind of point out and really take the opportunity to thank Mrs. Rodriguez, her cabinet, and the Board of Education for their support over the course of the school year. If you look at teaching assistants, you see 15.5. That's comprised of full-time teaching assistants who work in the special education programs. It's also comprised of part-time teaching assistants who mostly work with their kindergarten classes. We've had them in the past, but in the past, they worked in our kindergarten classes for an hour and 45 minutes. With your support this year, we were able to increase that to a full .5 teaching assistant in every kindergarten class that we offer across the district. So, they're in there for three and a half hours, and that has helped tremendously. Being able to, again, in years past, we had a teaching assistant who was in the room for mostly during ELA time and for centers, but that still left almost a half a day's worth of curriculum, where kids that needed that extra support weren't necessarily getting it with all of the needs in a kindergarten classroom. So, particularly during math and writing and other, you know, highly curricular areas. So, by having that teaching assistant in there, it's been, almost all of their academics have been in small groups and center-based, not just for ELA, but for math is center-based as well. So, it's been a huge change, and I know that the staff is thrilled with the support. You know, Mrs. Brock and myself, we also just want to thank you for that, because there's been a big, big difference this year as far as meeting the needs of our kindergartners and helping with those early readiness skills, where many of them are entering our school without that in place. So, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for that.
That increase from part-time to half-time TAs happened in both buildings for the 18-19 school year.
Budget assumptions. Our enrollment has been consistent over the years. When you look at all of our budget codes, we use a multiplier to figure out and factor our costs. So, if we are looking to purchase math workbooks, we're using the multiplier that we are projecting for our incoming year. It's very easy to take a kindergarten to first-grade cohort, because we already know how many kindergartners are currently in the school, and we're going to roll that number over to first grade, or, you know, looking at first grade going into second grade. Kindergarten gets a little challenging, because we never really know. And oftentimes, we get a lot of late enrollments, August, sometimes into September. So, we never really know for kindergarten. So, what we do, what we do, we take the current kindergarten cohort, and we use that number and factor in for the incoming class. So, it's going to be off by 20 or 30 each year, based on what the current kindergarten cohort is. Then the business office would take that, and they usually do like a 5% just buffer in case we get additional students. So, this year, at the time, we had 262 kindergartners. With a 5% buffer, we rolled that over to 275 for both grades. That's where we get the multiplier of 550, just so that you are aware of how we're coming to that number. Budget requests, as it was already spoken about, the additional text for our Reader's Workshop, the consumable classroom supplies, talking about the paper towels and the tissues and so forth, and also the paper supplies, which are now being put into the building budget. Previously, we were given those supplies from the MCC. We have tallied as much as possible what our usage is over the course of the year, and now we are budgeting for that. So, when you look at our budget codes, those are the numbers that are going to really stick out as the most dramatic increases. The only other real line that's going up somewhat is, again, we get quotes from the companies. So, we have a company called StarLab, which is an inflatable planetarium that we have the kids go in. They are doubling the cost of that. It's not a huge increase, but it's another, you know, $600 or so. So, that's why you see a little bit of an increase there. And the vast majority of our budget is based on quotes that we're getting from the companies and vendors that we're using.
What, do they think they're a pharmaceutical company?
Apparently, it's supposed to be better than ever. I can't wait to see it. It's coming in a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay. So, there's an improvement.
It's supposed to be, it's all brand-new.
It's all digital.
It's all digital. We welcome you to come check it out.
Any questions?
I have a question about the ENL program.
Sure.
So, you're saying that you're opening it up for both buildings, for K through 1?
It's a district-wide program.
Okay. So, how is it you're just putting it out there that parents will hopefully enroll, that you'll get the 20 children criteria?
It's done at K screening.
Okay.
Right, for ENL. Right.
Okay, so that's how you're potentially going to get them?
Right.
It's going to be, it'll be proposed, it'll be in your building in SmithClove?
Correct. And Mrs. Brock talked about a transitional program.
Okay.
That too would be a district-wide program. That would be housed at Sapphire.
Correct. Okay, so, and then logistically, busing and all of those, that will all end up getting worked out? Is it going to be for the full year, or are you looking at this to be temporary, and then the child would, let's say, transition back into either building based on what they've gained in the short period of time, or how will that work?
It would be a full-year program that we're looking at. The transitional could potentially be a two-year. That's the aspects of a transitional K is a two-year program. However, if a student were to gain the necessary skills and academics in that first year, we would definitely move them forward.
Okay.
Would not keep them into the program.
And the goal would be specifically in the bilingual program, that right now, students that fit the profile that Mr. Berger was speaking about, receive ENL in a very typical way. They're in a gen ed kindergarten classroom. There's an ENL teacher that pushes in or pulls the students out and works with them for a certain block of time during the day. The goal would be for them to have the bilingual support for their kindergarten year, and then transitioning them to a
Existing program.
An existing first-grade program, receiving more traditional ENL support the following school year.
Okay.
So, on the kindergarten size, has birth rate been, is that accurate at all? When we look at the birth rate in the county, do we use, I know it's sometimes used.
We do.
Is it accurate, though?
It's somewhat accurate. We just took a look at, Eric and I were looking at our, what was that called? Our demographic study, just to see if they were aligned. They're somewhat aligned according to what we see, but a little off, but they're on target.
And the hard thing for us is, we have a lot of families moving into the school district. So, you know, the birth rate is great to be able to kind of track families that currently, you know, have residency within the school district.
Right.
But it's really hard to predict, you know? I mean, some of the buildings are going to speak about, you know, just the upswing that they've had in enrollment, where two years ago, they were projected for, you know, I think it was the high school or the middle school.
The middle school, yeah.
Yeah, the middle school, you know, projected for 100 to 200 students less is now above their, you know.
Sure. And then the second one, on the demographic, we don't get in, I know with the students with special needs, we get into the issue of high concentration in a classroom. There's no issues with the state, with the ENL being high concentration?
No. And actually, the requirement to offer a bilingual program is a state mandate, and that's kind of the reason why I've said, in the past, during case screening, we've offered it.
I'm sure we didn't get in trouble.
But we haven't had enough people who've agreed to it. The threshold is 20. We haven't had enough, you know, ultimately, the parents have to agree to have their child placed in that program. We haven't had the necessary 20 in order to be able to run the program.
I think it's a great program. My only question was, you know, it's like, you have a great idea, and the state has a different idea?
Right. No, it's actually, it's actually a requirement, but we're thinking that next year, it actually may materialize. Fortunately for us, we've had this teacher for quite a few years, who's taught in the school district. We just haven't tapped into this resource yet, because the numbers haven't been there. Based upon the increase that we're seeing, we think that the numbers might finally be there for us to be able to offer it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have Mr. Jades at Pine Tree.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing the two, five building principals to present to you. I get to go first. So, our enrollment for next year is estimated at 857 students. We have 144 total staff, 84.6 our instructional staff, and we'll have 33 regular ed sections. That's what we have this year, and five of them will be self-contained classrooms. And just as a reminder, we have several, we have several building-wide, I'm sorry, district-wide classes. So, we have kids from North Main and CB that come over to us because of the classroom that they require as far as their IEPs are concerned. So, we have several classrooms that are district-wide classrooms. Some of the trends that we're seeing, we have two new classes that are starting. The 8-1-2 will be coming over to Pine Tree. And we also are starting a class that kind of gives another layer of restricted environments. A child may not be perfect for the 12-1, and may not be perfect for the 15-1 full-time. So, we're trying to have like an intermediate kind of setting for them, and that's the other class that we're starting. We have enough students for that class. So, those two will increase our special ed staffing by two. We're kind of a unique building with regard to population. We had 70, as of today, we had new students move in today. So, we've had 76 kids move into Pine Tree. 34 have withdrawn since last July 1. And so, we're plus 42 from the budget numbers that we presented last. So, we're up 42 kids. And the nice thing is, we have a very large group of fifth graders that are leaving us to go to the middle school, sadly. Lovely group of kids. And so, by us keeping the same number of settings at 33 sections, it allows us to have really good class sizes next year in second through fifth grade. So, we're really excited about that. Our staff, as I mentioned before, the only increase is the special ed teachers going from 12 to 14. Everything else is maintaining the same. And then with regard to the related service staff, because of the two extra classes, the psychologist is going from .6 to .8, hopefully. And so, a little slight change. Everything else is the same with regard to our staff. Some of our assumptions and requests are due to, we have a very old and torn library carpet that needs to be replaced desperately. So, we finally have looked at that as something that we want to be able to do this upcoming year, and we want to replace the carpet with carpet squares. So, if something happens, if one gets damaged, one carpet square can be lifted and replaced. And it also puts up the door to do some other creative things in our library, similar to what the other buildings have done with some acre space areas, to make our library a little more, you know, 21st century. We also added a line, which we have not had in the past at Pine Tree, with regard to furniture. Our cafeteria tables, our chairs, our desks sometimes get, you know, worn, and they need to be replaced. And so, as of, up until this year, we've been using other funds, either going to Dr. Hassler or finding some other areas to kind of replace these. And I wanted to add that line there, because annually, it's nice to be able to replace the damaged desks. And we also have, half of our building have what we, as opposed to four-legged chairs, they had these sled chairs, and they're very dangerous. I was in an observation this past week, and a fifth grader leaned back just a little bit, and he kind of fell back. So, my goal is to replace all of these sled chairs with four-legged chairs for safety reasons. So, that line will help that. And then over the years, that line will stay there, and it will help replace cafeteria tables that need to be replaced, and desks and that kind of stuff. Like the other principals have mentioned, our paper lines have shifted toward us with regard to copy paper, and also the tissue paper and paper towels. And, you know, at our level, our paper towel use is for the Science 21 projects and things that are being cleaned up with regard to the science projects the kids are doing. Then, of course, the process of getting the Reader's Workshop libraries in each classroom is going to take some funds, because the kids will have the opportunity to choose the book they're reading. There's a full lesson in the classroom, and then they get a chance to take the books. There's a full lesson in the classroom and then they get a chance to take the books that they've book shopped with and read a book at their level with that lesson that they just learned. Very different setup than what we currently are doing with our guided reading. So our classroom libraries have to have a big metamorphosis and that's where, that's where those funds are being spent. Let's see. So my budget codes, there are some increases. As you can see, the field trips is a little increase. I had to go to Dr. Hassler and he was kind enough last year to give us some extra funds. With those extra numbers, we didn't have enough. Yes, Dr. Hassler. So by having an increase of, a slight increase, we'll be able to give our kids those field trips. And then the rest of the increases are, you know, as I mentioned before, due to the paper supply shifts coming to us. And that is it. Any questions?
Questions from anybody on this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Christine Al from Central Valley.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about our school and some budget considerations for the next school year. Currently, we have 551 students enrolled at Central Valley. Very interesting, we had a lot of movement over summer, but between September and February, the number of students that left and the number of students enrolled kept us at exactly 551. We were fascinated by that. We currently have 100 professional staff members and including both full and part-time, and 10 of those staff members are shared within the district. Currently, you can see the numbers of our teachers that we have within the building. Next year, our projections with the number of students coming to us from Smith Clover and Sapphire for second grade, we are projected to go down a section. So we'll be at five sections of second grade, which is reflected in the classroom teacher line. We also currently have two special education programs that will not be at Central Valley next year. One simply due to the fact that children are aging out and they're going up to the middle school. And the other program, the other 8-1-2 program that we have, we currently have very few students enrolled and it is not a sustainable program as such. And as Mr. Judice has students coming to him, that program is shifting over to Pine Tree. As the majority of the students are projected to be at Pine Tree. But we're more than happy to take any program. And again, for our support staff, just showing what we have. And again, the teaching assistant decrease is a reflection due to the loss of the two special education programs.
And the increase at Pine Tree is basically the reduction at CB is moving over to Pine Tree.
Are these FTEs?
Yes.
Yep.
And just as our colleagues, our enrollment has been very consistent. The multiplier that we're using next year for projections is based on 540 students, which is a reflection of the decrease of students coming to us next year. And we are requesting an increase in our language arts text to also support the libraries for the TC's Reader's Workshop, which you've heard so much about. And our children do have the opportunity to, between what they do in the classroom and take books home, it's approximately eight to 10 books a week that they will be going through. So an increase in classroom libraries will help sustain children in order to have those selections of titles to read. We're also requesting an increase in classroom supplies as, again, we're no longer asking families to purchase certain items such as toilet, uh, toilet paper, tissues and paper towels. We've not, we will not ask them to buy toilet paper. And again, we're also increasing our paper line because we are budgeting for paper at the building. We are also asking for an increase in some furniture equipment. We would like to create a student chill zone. It's something that we've talked about for a while. Right outside of our support suite area, we have an unused untapped area. Very often, we have children that just need a few minutes just to be able, to have a mindful minute, to be able just to, a safe space to go regroup and then be able to go back to the classroom. This will allow us to buy some things such as dry erase tables, which we find very helpful. Children really enjoy just be able just to draw or write on them a little bit. And then just a few other types of seating and just some things for that area, as well as we're also looking into creating some sensory hallways as well as indoor recess hallways. So children would have the option of being able to use the hallways during indoor recess time to be able to have some indoor safe games that we would work out with our physical education teacher and then the sensory hallway for children to have an opportunity, a space just again, to be able to go and have a space that they can just regroup and then go back to classrooms. And as my colleagues, this is all reflected right here in the budget codes where you will see the increase in the general supplies as well as in the CV principal paper line and overall budget really being pretty flat overall for the request.
Any questions?
Your, your numbers of staff, was that FTE? Because it looks, the shared ones?
Yes.
That's an equivalent?
Yes, correct.
So it's 110? Got it.
No, it's 100, sorry. It's 100, it's 100 people.
Individuals.
Individuals with 10 being shared within the district.
Right. The FTEs are on the chart. When you're looking at the 18, 19 to the 19, 20, the, you know, the
So it's 100 FTE?
No, 100 people.
100 professionals.
Some of them may be part-time split between multiple buildings.
Okay.
However, on the chart, those are actual FTEs.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. You're going to hear some similar things. Obviously, the last one to go here is going to go through and repeat a few things here as far as some of the budgetary items, et cetera. North Main has 501 students, 502 as of this morning actually coming in, but, so they're moving. Our enrollment's relatively consistent. I think we've had an increase of about 11 students. 44 left, 33, yeah, 44 came in, 33 left, something around those numbers there. So it's relatively consistent since July. We have approximately 91 professional staff members. Now, that's not FTEs. That's 91, just like Chris Berger said earlier, from custodians to cafeteria, et cetera. You'll see the FTEs in the chart coming up in a minute here. Some of the trends at North Main. Media Center, which you're going to hear about as I go through the budget here because my budget is an increase this year. Working with the cabinet, we had a proposal to remodel our library. We've done a lot of work on the library cosmetically as far as the walls go, decorations, various things. We've worked with some hand-me-downs from the high school. It's time to really invest something into it. So we had a few vendors come in, we have a proposal, and we've decided, actually, the district has decided to work for the next few years. We're the first one and we're, we have a $44,000 line item in my budget there that unfortunately increased my budget 38%, which is, they're giving me a hard time about here, my colleagues here, because mine was zero last year. So you'll see that moving forward. Newcomers, very, very similar to what Chris Berger mentioned. We had, at North Main, since, I think it's August 23rd, we've had relatively 22 what we call newcomers, different than ENL students. When we say newcomers, we're talking about students that come in, just like Chris said, that don't speak the language. And some of them come in too, and you'll hear it from middle school through high school with no education, very little education, not speaking English, parents not speaking English. So those, we consider are newcomers. We do not have a bilingual program on the, in our horizon because that's not what we're looking at. We have a few different plans and a few different proposals in the works that we're looking at and still working out the details to see where that's going to end up for next year to try and address these students because they are on a mixed grade level from two through five. It's not just coming in as kindergartners. We're talking about four different grade levels. So to address that, we have a couple of different concepts that we're looking at. Project FIT, you've heard about already. That's, you know, John's doing a great job promoting that every board meeting. I love that. We do not know what our numbers are yet. We refer to it as a playground to a certain extent for ease. It really is a total fitness area that our phys ed teachers would actually use as a teaching station when the weather is nice and they can go outside. There's a lot more that goes with that. They will actually have to do various tests throughout the year with it. They record those results. They have to send them back to the company. The company will come to see us a couple of times, see how we use the equipment. It's pretty intensive, so we're looking forward to that. That's our Project FIT and hopefully we get enough votes for that.
I'm so tired of, say, of pressing, you know,
You know, five times a day, John. You can hear it. Five times a day.
I am not a robot. I am not a robot.
You know? I feel for you, John.
Thank you.
The vestibule at North Main, there are, us at, between the middle school and my side, our, North Main, we've, they've redesigned the entrances. You'll see that when you get to both buildings. There's a double entrance now walking into the building. We've taken it a step further with the help of Peter, Andre, and Frank. We now have, as you walk in, it's not completed yet, but you'll walk into our vestibule and there'll be a sliding window. A lot of jokes about a drive-up window, things like that, but it's basically a sliding window where our greeter slash safety will be. And they will scan you at that point through the raptor system where they'll take your ID. They'll check you out there. You'll get your visitor's pass there. And again, you're not in the building yet. You're basically in this vestibule. So you can't get in the building at that point. They'll buzz you in from that point forward. So we love that idea. That's kind of the ultimate in being, being safe. It will take a little bit of getting used to from everybody, from the usual visitors to the parents that come. It's going to take a little getting used to. We're not there yet. We're still in the construction phases. We're probably about 50% there. We should have it done within the next four weeks. So that's something new for North Main. Those are our FTEs. We are actually reducing one section, so we're dropping one section in our gen ed classes from 22 to 21. That's due to the numbers coming in from Smith Clover. Across the board, you'll see the other numbers are very consistent. We're not losing anybody. They stay pretty much stagnant, full-time. And those are our FTEs. Now, that's part of the 91 staff members that I mentioned earlier. Assumptions. These all go with our budget lines. We talked earlier about textbook line increasing. That is our, in our reading program, again, Brian did a great job explaining how that works, said where that money's going to. Consumer supply, no, you know, North Main's not purchasing toilet paper like CB, but we are purchasing paper towels. Couldn't let that go, Christine, sorry.
Thanks a lot.
We are purchasing, purchasing paper towels and various wipes, things like that, things that we obviously are not going to send over to the parents. And we are, we are supporting our design in the classrooms. There's many things that we're doing, but the, the areas that you see the increase are the textbooks, classroom supplies, and the paper budget is a significant increase when we get into that. The requests are very similar to what I just discussed. Those are our line item numbers there. The big number is towards the bottom half there after the second function subtotal there, 21-10. You'll see that wonderful number of 44,000. That's what sends my budget to the moon there, 38, 7, 6 increase, but well worth it. It will definitely bring the library, which has become a true, I really say this, a true media hub of that building. We actually have, thanks to Bargav, we have now a dozen Chromebooks that were, they no longer could be updated, so the students wouldn't be using them in the classroom necessarily, but we're piling a program where we're actually having students sign them out and take them home to do their work. Very unique. It's working great, by the way, Bargav, thank you. And we're having more requests from more teachers do it. So, and that all comes out of our media center. So a true hub of the building.
Questions?
Questions?
You will have to give your trophy for the best budget to Christine.
It's killing. It's killing.
He can say whatever he wants. Yours is negative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is Mike Sano presenting for the middle school.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to be here and I do appreciate the opportunity to kind of walk through some of the programs and things that are coming up in the middle school and that will be obviously reflected in our budget this year. So the middle school is still the largest middle school outside of New York State at 1,670 students. We have a sixth through eighth grade program with 242 staff members. As everybody else said, that's across the board. Every part-time employee in every role throughout our building. One interesting note that I wanted to make mention of in our trends is that this time last year when we were having this conversation, it was projected that the middle school would have 1,550 students. That's, that was our project, her projection at that point. Now, we have 1,670 students. So 120 students in addition to the projected amount. So this time, this year, we're projecting that we're going to have 1640 next year. The likelihood is that it'll be more than that. I'm not going to say 120 students more than that, but the likelihood is that it will be more than 1640. We probably will see an increase in our overall population above 1670 next year. And the trend is that regardless of a stagnant enrollment or even a declining enrollment, our needs are certainly increasing. The needs of the students that are coming to us from out of district, the needs that are coming up from the elementary schools as well are increasing. And we need to be in a position where we can better support the variety of needs that are coming our way. We have this year, since September, 27 new ENL students along with 19 students who have IEPs. Along with those needs, there are related services like counseling and emotional and social support for students who are transitioning to Monver Woodbury Middle School. And it's important that we have the staff to provide that support. So the budget lines look really great this year, right? And if you've had a chance to look at that, you'll notice that there's a big decrease. And I can't really claim a lot of credit for that. Last year, we had textbooks that we needed to purchase. This year, we don't have them. The real ask, the real budgetary concern here is in staffing. And that's really a much bigger ask than a budget to, a budget line to budget line increase or decrease by a few percentages. So if you look here, we have the major core subject areas as far as teachers, and these are, of course, FTEs that we're talking about. A consideration that you have to put into place here with middle school and high school is that we also have department chairs and coordinators who have a partial class load and then the rest of their responsibilities is as the department chair or the coordinator for that department. So we're not asking for any increases line to line for ELA, math, science, social studies, technology. We are asking for an increase in world languages. And that is due to an overall trend, an increasing trend and a positive trend where students with IEPs, our students with disabilities, have been more and more given access to world languages. And they're taking world languages at a higher rate than they've ever taken in the past due to the work of Karen Jordan at the secondary level as well as our teachers, our faculty, in providing opportunities for students. So as a result, our class sizes overall have just really been maxed out. And we're talking about several classes at the 30 student, student enrollment. And in some cases, really having to base an entire schedule for a student who comes into Monver Woodbury based on where we can fit Spanish into their schedule. And that's really not the way it should be. So what we're looking for is to move some personnel around. One person who's currently shared with the high school, possibly, and possibly take a section from the high school, and John will talk more about the request for a hire there, so that we can better distribute the population of students taking Spanish and lower the class sizes overall. Our special education teacher request is a .4 increase from this year to next year. That increase is offset a bit because that's not a brand-new position. That is a position that we want to reallocate potentially from the high school to share with us. So that's not asking for a brand-new person. That's not a brand-new hire, but it's reuse, it's using differently, reallocating the resources that we currently have in place. Did I skip anything else there?
Nope.
No, everything else is the same?
Yep.
Okay. The next lines here, we have our librarian's nurse. Okay. The next lines here, we have our librarian's nurse. Social worker is where I'd like to draw your attention. We're looking for a decrease, and I know after last week's or last meeting's presentation from PPS, that might seem strange, but we're looking for a decrease in the social worker position because we currently have 1.3. And the way that .3 of a person works anywhere is that either they're not there the whole day or they're not there the whole week. And we're in a situation where we actually have both. The position is not there for the entire day, and it's not there for the entire week. And in a student support role, you really need to be there all the time. When you're building those relationships with kids and you're working with them through crises and difficult times in their lives, it's important that they have a consistent person, a go-to, that they know is available to them and there for them when they need it. And unfortunately, the way it's set up isn't ideal right now for some of our students in need. That is not to say that we don't need more support. What I'm asking and proposing to the Board of Ed for support is that we are looking to increase our psychologists, school psychologists, from a 3.0 to a full 4.0. We would prefer that that hire in the future is, and we're looking at potentially hiring somebody who is bilingual in that area as well, to meet the diverse and variety of needs that that person will need to serve within our building. So currently, we have three full-time psychologists. We're looking to add an additional psychologist and not a social worker, just to kind of walk you through the rationale there, in that psychologists are able to do things for students with disabilities and related services that a social worker isn't necessarily able to do. And it gives us more versatility in the position to also not just be a support role, but be more of the clinician role as far as a psychologist is concerned.
Additionally, related to that, the benefit of having a bilingual psychologist, there are also some evaluations that need to be administered bil lingually. So having that bilingual psychologist would allow us to have more of those evaluations done in district rather than having to go outside to like a BOCS in order to be able to pay for them to do that. They would be able to be done in-house.
So the assumption is what I have already touched upon here. While enrollment is projected to slightly decrease, the needs will definitely increase. And I'm confident in saying that because over the course of the last five years that I've been in Monver Woodbury Middle School, I've only seen an increase in needs every single year. And I think we should be flattered by that. I think there's probably some geopolitical things out of our control that we don't deserve credit for, but our district as a whole has an excellent reputation, and people want to be here to make sure that their child's needs are being met, and they're getting the best possible education. And certainly, the increase in needs that we're seeing, I believe, is reflective of that. Our requests here are primarily for staff to further support the needs of our changing students and our changing student demographics, and furniture. And when we go into the budget lines, you're going to see, obviously, that there's not a huge increase in any one area. However, the way we are reallocating the funds that we have is primarily to bring our school into the 21st century. If you look around the middle school, there are a few pockets of classrooms that teachers, with the help of the team at the middle school, have invested in some new furniture. And it's not just about having new shiny stuff. It's about changing the way education is approached in the classroom, making it more student-centered, creating those media spaces, workspaces, the learning environment that cultivates collaboration, and really gets the students responsible in taking ownership for their learning. And frankly, the rows of desks and what you would have seen in a classroom in 1919 is just not adequate for today's 21st century learner.
You remember that, right, John?
Taxi.
Unfortunately, our students right now know what that's like. We're going to keep going, mix that for the record. Okay. So just like the elementary principals explained, there is a change to the paper budget. That's just a consolidation of two budget lines. So the increase that we're seeing under MS principal paper supply is just taking the MS paper supply budget and throwing it in there and putting it in one place, so we all know where the money is, and it's one clear line. If we go down to textbooks, sorry, you'll see that there's a $12,000 decrease there. We purchased biology books last year that were needed. This year, they're not needed. Obviously, we don't purchase them every year, so thankfully, those funds are now available to the elementary schools so that they can increase the text that they need for a reader's workshop. The music equipment, there's a bit of a deduction there that you might notice. Although the deduction is coming from us as far as money is concerned, that's so that it's reallocated again for the high school, so that they can make a bigger purchase on some of the equipment that they need. The good news is that the equipment that they have is excellent, and it's an improvement on the equipment that we currently have. So we're going to get some hand-me-downs there that are going to really improve the equipment that we make available to our students. Again, there's a textbook decrease there of a few thousand dollars that you may notice. That was the Heritage Speaker course that we purchased some books for that was new last year to the middle school. Again, monies that can be used in other places for other texts outside of the middle school. And you'll see a decrease in conferences, meetings. That's a budget line that's used for professional development when I'm approving somebody, a staff member, to get professional development, usually outside of the school, going to a BOCS, et cetera. Those conferences in general are not very expensive, and I wanted to make sure that I could support any staff member coming to me, asking me for a professional development. But what I've seen now in two years of doing this, I can do some comparisons, and the requests just don't match the budget that's there. So what I'm doing is asking to decrease that budget line to what's more reasonable to be asked for, and then use those funds to, again, further support our teachers in changing the classroom environment and their furniture purchases. So bottom line is a pretty significant decrease, but again, I cannot take credit for that because when the pendulum swings and we need text in a few years for a course, I know that that will be an increase.
Or toilet paper.
Toilet paper is always in demand, no matter where you are.
Any questions?
Yeah, I noticed there's no security food services or custodial.
So that is a district line, so there are lines within the middle school that probably were there at one time because it was done differently, but somebody like Frank Scolante or Peter Cadrone would be the budget line for, or that would be under their purview.
And that's part of the reason why, on the first slide in each of the buildings, we present the full staff member of the entire building, but then when we do the breakdown, that's the piece that's sort of managed by the building principal in terms of the hiring.
Yeah, it might be helpful to see, even if it's responsible for somebody else, it might be helpful because on your FTE side, your numbers look great compared to state averages. And so if you put those others in there, your budget might look actually better to the public.
Got it.
Right.
Okay.
Sure.
Do you, I have a question. Don't we have to do that under ESA? Don't we have to now put the custodians in their building? When we finalize everything and we report everything to the state, the state's going to want to know what we're costing for each building.
Well, there's certain things which we definitely will have to identify by building, like teachers, you know, which we haven't done in the past. So that's going to be, and I mentioned this previously, a big change. There's other things, like I think buildings and grounds, 1620s, that function code, which we may be able to allocate based on enrollment or some other factor. I mean, I actually haven't seen all the clear guidance about how to deal with certain things like that.
Okay.
So we'll see. And I've said in the past, there are prescribed codes and things we have to do, and then there are things that are optional. So we could do that if we wanted to.
And food services as well, I guess that might be.
Yeah. Food service is a little different. That's the school lunch fund. So that's actually not, you know, not part of the general fund financially.
Okay.
But we can see the people, you know.
Yeah, I was thinking more of the FTEs.
Yep.
I have two questions. Just tell me, what's the difference between equipment and supplies for physical education?
So depending on a purchase, there would be, if it was going under an equipment line, it would be more of a permanent piece of equipment, bench press, something along those lines.
Consumable?
Yeah, that would not be a consumable. Your supplies are more of a consumable items that are.
Masks. We put masks in the equipment line.
Baseballs, volleyball.
And just curious, any consideration into any upgrades for the auditorium, lighting, sound, or anything?
Yeah. So when we've had discussions about the auditorium, we've also had conversations about air conditioning and things of that nature, big projects. And in working with Patrick and working with Peter, like, those are things where we have to figure out, what's the priority? How are we going to go about budgeting for big-ticket items like that? And it's really not, what we've come to is really not a building year-to-year budget. That's more of a five-year plan, capital project. What are we looking to do as far as important improvements to the building?
Yeah. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There he was, hiding.
He was hiding in the corner.
He's hiding in the corner.
Were you hiding?
No.
And finally, we have John Cassidy to speak about the high school budget.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for us to speak about the high school budget for the upcoming school year. Our current enrollment is 2342. Our total staff is 281. I have noticed that I only have 41 more people than Mr. Massano, so I have to look into what he has that I don't have a little more. Our enrollment next year, we predict a slight increase with the new admits that we continually are getting over the years. Our ENL classes will be increasing as well as it is in all the other schools, and we are going to continue working with our social-emotional development, specifically supporting the MW cares initiative. On staffing this year, we're pretty much maintaining the same staff from this year to next year. We are looking for an increase of .6, as Mr. Massano stated before, in the world language for a Spanish teacher. One of the reasons we're doing that as well is that we're introducing Level 4 of our heritage class, Spanish class, so that needs a teacher for that, as well as our class size is really starting to get pretty big as well. As Mr. Massano mentioned, Ms. Jordan has really worked hard in helping open up opportunities for our students that have a classification and having them become part of the world language program. We're also looking for a 2.5 increase in clerical. Years ago, each house office had two clerical in it, and over the years, that has gotten away and been redistributed in other buildings. We find a need to help service and support our students. If we could have 2.5 more clerical, it would be helpful to help with the management of students and servicing the students when they come into the offices as well. Those will be the only two areas of staffing increases that we're looking for next year.
And as Mr. Massano mentioned, the reduction of special education, the 27 to the 26.6, that .4 is going to the middle school.
Some of the assumptions that we have every year is consumables required for students every year. Those are students that may have, need a little extra time for us to help them meet their graduation requirements. We also have no change to our pupil multipliers. As I stated, we're going to add a Spanish Heritage Level 4 next year. The big request that we have, we're going to continue with staff development and conferences. At the high school level, we have teachers that really go to our national conferences in their subject area, and they come back and turnkey their information. We're going to continue to do that. We have textbook replacements. We always have textbooks that get worn out, as well as we need to continue with our new Global 10 textbook. We have added some field trips the past couple of years, so some of the department budgets have increased a little bit to take care of some of the field trips. And as Mr. Massano mentioned, we are getting a new set of tympani. The middle school will get our old set of tympani. Everybody will be happy with their tympani. There is, you know, little, to minor fluctuation within our budget lines for the school, for next year's budget. As you can see, there really isn't much. Some of the changes, such as the paper supplies that we just talked about earlier, the general supplies for the high school as well, as needs increase, and we try to add different ways to engage our students. But most of the budgets are staying the same or pretty stable for the next year. Same thing on page two. So the overall budget increase here at the middle school is a little less than 8.5% of an increase in the budget.
And just a quick note, the Spanish for Heritage piece, for example, is a class that's being proposed for next year. The book that you had approved tonight is potentially, in the event that that class moves forward, that book, similar to what we've done in the past, we could potentially purchase that book this year with remaining textbook funds this year so as not to have it included in next year's budget. So this is sort of lining things up for the possibilities, should all of this fall into place, for that to possibly happen, and that would ultimately be not included in the budget.
Dr. Hustler, is that the course that students will receive college credit for?
Correct. This new, the Spanish for Heritage 4 course, that textbook is a requirement by SUNY Albany. That course is going to be offered for SUNY credit, and that textbook is a requirement by SUNY Albany in order to be able to offer the course for college credit.
Any questions?
I noticed you had one reduction for a teaching assistant. Is that also tied in with the special ed?
I totally missed that. Thank you for bringing that. We have a, no, it has nothing to do with special ed. It is a computer lab TA, and we're reallocating that position into the MCC, to be used district-wide. Thank you for bringing that up.
Same comment before, I'd use the FTE, because you actually look better than any of the other schools on a per-student FTE basis.
Don't tell him that. No, oh, no.
Thank you.
But that's expected with higher ratios.
Sit up a little higher.
Yeah. It's expected with higher, higher student ratios.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
I just have one comment. There were a few people who were saying, who looked hesitant about saying that they needed more staffing, that they needed more teachers. And we, as the Board of Ed, have to balance the fact that, you know, over 70% of our budget comes from local taxpayers, and we are responsible to them. We are also responsible for a full and good education for the students that are put in our charge. And I just want to make sure we're not embarrassed about saying we may need an extra teaching assistant or a teacher. Fight for it. You may not get it ultimately, but fight for the staff that you need in order to educate the children in your charge in the best possible way that you can. That's just me talking. That's just me talking.
Well, that's the board, so I just want to chime in on that.
Well.
Because they've heard that from me as well. I told them that they can get up here and ask for whatever they wanted. It wasn't necessarily that they were going to get it, but I told them that this was their opportunity to ask for whatever they wanted.
We're here to help you do the best job you can for the kids. Oh, next. Personnel.
I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Stacy moved. Okay. Dan, seconded all those in favor.
Second.
Opposed. So carried. Approval of 2019, 2020 student calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Anthony moved. Don, seconded all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Business and financial. Patrick?
I would also respectfully request the approval of the items under business financial. It's three items, standard monthly financial reports for December, obsolete items, three pieces of cafeteria equipment, kitchen equipment, and one contract. I mentioned the renewal with the Village of Harriman for the lease of the Harriman Center.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Move by Don, seconded Suzanne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements made in the Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education, 16.1, 1.2, 1.3, 4?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Reports by Board and Central Office. Bargav.
Oh, my.
A board member asked me to switch it up.
So last week, I attended a Central Valley parent as a reading partner event, read through the fifth grade. It was very nicely done by Mrs. Arnold and Mr. Barong, and ice cream was fantastic. It was good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Just a quick congratulations to the music department. As the, sort of, the winter concert season winds down, I was at the Kaleidoscope Concert and the Prism Concert, which are absolutely phenomenal. So congratulations, everybody, on a job well done. As the music season, concert season winds down, the drama musical season winds up. I saw Junie B. Jones at Central Valley, which is fantastic. Middle school, the North Main play is March 1st and 2nd. Middle school play is the 13th and 15th and 16th. High school plays the 29th and 30th. Absolutely, I encourage everybody to come out. I was also at PARP, and probably better than my reading, I had an opportunity to be able to hear Mr. Hubert read his book to a group of students. And if you want to hear an amazing person read to a group of students, you bring a great character and charisma to reading to kids, and it was very, very cool.
The same with the board.
Yes. And that's it.
Patrick?
I just want to thank the principals for the presentations and the work involved in the budget this year and support in developing the budget. Thank you.
Pat?
Congratulations to all those retirees or soon-to-be retirees who are on tonight's agenda that you approved. Well done, building principals. You did a great job.
I was the one that asked to go before John, although most of the stuff we go to we're together. But I want to thank the presentations. It was great. I know a lot of time and effort goes into it. I also want to encourage everybody to continue to vote for North Main. It's been exciting to watch the community involvement in that. I was at the high school one of the days and sent a photo to Mr. Coto and them because they were. they were, the athletic club had gotten the laptops out and had kids yelling to vote, so that was great. I love the community involvement. It was great to attend the NISBA conference, we got to see a different side of John, which was fun, but it was very...
The pink boa was really...
The pink boa, yes, John. We'll put that up on display. It was great to see, and I know John mentioned that for myself, this being the first year, last year, they didn't have the conference because of snow, so I was actually able to attend. And it was a great experience, and I'm not disheartened by the fact that sometimes, like John said, we don't know how much we've accomplished, but I do hope that based on what we heard, that it will be positive for our school community, and I would definitely attend again. I wanna thank Carolyn Prudence, as always, for the great videos, because they really, I do love them, especially the little kids. I mean, the two girls that talked about the snow day, I mean, it was great. Junie B. Jones at Central Valley, thank you so much. And I was able to read at PARP as well. Dawn still might have more than me that way.
Anthony?
Can we start with me next week?
Yes, Anthony.
I thank you to all the principals for your presentations. I know how much time and effort it takes to do that, and we really appreciate it. I did also have a chance to attend the Prism Concert, and it is remarkable, as always. And tomorrow, I will be once again in a starring role in the Lunchtime Theater at Smithlow, and John has been coaching me on how to, you know, act and give my full effort, so thank you, John, and good evening to everyone.
What a liar. But thank you.
I sounded good, though, right?
Yeah, right. Dan?
This is awkward. I don't like change. I wanna thank all the principals for presenting their budgets. It's probably a very daunting task. We just get to sit up here and listen to you for a couple of minutes and move on. I also wanna thank the music department, Mr. Toborski. The Prism Concert, it was the first time I attended one, was fantastic, very talented students. And then I went to the Kaleidoscope Concert, and just hearing Band, Orca, whatever it was called, was unbelievable. Just having all those students participate at the same time was fantastic. Lastly, Facebook alerted me that it was someone's birthday yesterday, but since the meeting was canceled, I figured we would just celebrate here. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to sing "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Don Beeler.
We don't need a motion. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you.
Look at his face.
Happy birthday to you. Twenty-one and never been. Happy birthday, dear Donnie. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
Put it up in the back.
Yeah, well, me too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don? Oh, maybe.
Dawn?
Go ahead.
So you probably should've picked a better week to go first, because I don't really have a lot of...
That's her excuse.
It's only been two weeks since we last met. So thank you to all the principals. I know that there's a lot of work that goes into presenting the budgets, I appreciate that. And like Stacy, I attended the conference and felt the same way, that, you know, it seemed a little bit repetitive in everything that we were saying, but hopefully, what we did say really, you know, resonated with them, and we can get some answers for our kids. I also went to Central Valley and saw Junie B. Jones, and that was amazing, and it was hard to believe that it was the dress rehearsal, right? Because they were so good, and wow, kudos to them. As well as the Pick a Reading Partner, which is the New York City PTA program that encourages, you know, all students to love reading. So it was great to be a guest speaker, and thank you for inviting me.
Don?
Shout out to Patrick and his team. I mean, I can't emphasize what a big deal it is that they've been able to move the approval up of our fields. That is such an accomplishment, and we've heard the various athletic groups here tonight, and moves like that will make a very big difference as to when we can use the fields and how quickly we get it done. So that, to me, is a huge accomplishment, so, and thank you for the birthday present.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I'd really like to thank all the building principals. That's a huge undertaking, getting that budget together, and I really appreciate all your hard work and your efforts on behalf of our district and our students. And have a good night, everyone.
Sue?
I'd like to welcome Donna officially.
Yes.
And wish her a speedy recovery.
Great, thank you. Else?
I just wanna thank the administrators for their presentations today, and it was really refreshing to hear the things that they're asking for, the fact that they're looking for spaces that are different, that are not the ordinary desks that we've had for so long, asking for an additional psychologist because we are committed to the social-emotional wellness of our students, and just looking at our libraries as a media center and really creating that. So I'm excited to see the work that, if the budget passes, that we'll be able to do that at North Main, and then moving forward. On another note, I just wanna remind everybody that on February 27th at 6 o'clock at Pine Tree, we're gonna be hosting our Crusader Chat. For the first time, it's gonna be Facebook Live, meaning that any person can go on Facebook and be able to see what we're presenting, and also comment. So that'll be interesting, but I feel that it's important that we try to reach out to as many community members. It's very difficult for people to be able to actually leave their home, so I'm excited to see that. And if you can make it, again, it's February 27th, it's at 6 o'clock at Pine Tree, and it's the Crusader Chat. Thank you.
I'm writing that down. Thanks. Thanks, everybody, for your presentations. I echo what has been said about the effort that goes into it. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel items regarding specific teachers?
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.